So can I ask everyone to please take their seats? We are going to reconvene our open session. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Meeting at Long Beach City College, Wednesday, April 26, 2023. My name is Herlinda Chico. I am the President of the Board. My pronouns are she and her. Board Secretary Reese, can we please have a call to order?
Did we want to do the pledge first, or you want the roll call now?
Well, on my, it says reconvene open session called to order. So, and then I, the next item is pledge of allegiance. So yeah, but the roll call. Oh, never mind. So sorry. Um, yes, pledge of allegiance that I've asked Vice President Malauulu to, um, to lead it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I see some of you wearing denim today. It's denim day to raise awareness for sexual assault and abuse for against women and girls. So join me in the flag salute in honor of denim day today. Right hand over your heart. Please begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever. Thank you.
I apologize for that. I don't know why I read that incorrectly. Item 2.3 is our land acknowledgement. The Long Beach City College acknowledges our presence on the traditional ancestral land of the Gabrielino Tongva peoples. This land remains unceded territory. We acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from this territory. Long Beach City College honors and respects the Gabrielino Tongva ancestors and their connection to this land. Now, 2.4, Board Secretary Reese, can we have a roll call?
Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Herlinda Chico?
Present.
Vivian Malauulu?
Here.
Uduakjo Enta?
Yep.
Sanizia?
Here.
Student Trustee Hernandez?
Present.
Thank you. Item 2.5 is a report on closed session items, and there is nothing to report. We'll move on to 2.6. Public comments on agenda items. A total of three minutes will be allotted to each speaker with a maximum of 20 minutes per subject. Board Secretary, any requests?
No requests.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 2.7, approval of the minutes of March 15th, 2023, regular Board of Trustees meeting. Is there a motion? Second? Uh, is there any discussion? Uh, seen none, uh, vote? Or, well, there's no opposition for a minute, so we can just, you want to do the?
We can do the voice vote. Were all those in favor?
Yes.
Sure. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Great. Thank you. Uh, item 2.8, reordering of the agenda. Any request to reorder the agenda? Seen none? We will move on to item 3.1, resolution for Arab American Heritage Month. The, the Board of Trustees adopted resolution, uh, 042623A, recognizing Arab American Heritage Month as submitted. Is there a motion?
So.
Second.
As, okay, so I heard Vice President Malauulu and Trustee Baxter. Great. Uh, is there discussion? Any trustee comments?
Yes, President Chico, thank you and colleagues for agendizing this for a second year. This was something that um, I led last year in honoring Arab American Heritage Month, and I'm grateful that we're uh, continuing this tradition to honor our Arab American community members, faculty, students, and staff.
Thank you for bringing that forward, and thank you for your representation. Um, trustee, I mean Vice President Malauulu.
I am also very happy to support this resolution. I still remember some of these shared sentiments of shock that, uh, many people in the community expressed to me last year when, um, it was never a secret, though I have said this many times in public, but apparently not at a board meeting. But my, my stepfather, who adopted me, is African American, but my biological father is Arab. He's Palestinian. So I could see some of you weren't watching last year's meeting because you're shocked again this year. But I'm very happy to support this resolution, and I'm very proud of my Arab background, my Palestinian background. Um, I, my only regret is that I did not grow up with that side of the family to have the full scope of the culture and the language and the education. Um, I do keep in touch with my father. In fact, I was just with my paternal side of the family this past weekend. And I'm, you know, catching on many, many years later and learning, and I learned a new Arab word, haram. That was a brand new word that I learned this weekend. It was a way of saying pobrecito. So I'm getting there, but I'm very proud to support this resolution, and I'm grateful for trustee, to trustee Zia that she brought it forward last year. And, uh, the one thing that is important about this resolution is that even though Long Beach doesn't have a large Middle Eastern Arab population, the ripple effect of what we do does, and the community that we serve and the people that go out into the community as a result of what we do here do. So we want everyone to feel welcome and included. So thank you.
And thank you for your representation as well. Um, we can invite, I think we have some guests here with us. Let's see, um, Dr. Samara Habash, Department Chair, Communication Study, is, uh, Dr. Habash here? Oh, would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon, Superintendent Munoz. Esteemed members of the Board of Trustees and everybody else, everyone else here today. Marhaba wa assalamu alaykum.
Alaykum wa assalam.
Thank you. On behalf of the Arab American community, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for passing this resolution. This recognition is extremely significant to Arab Ameri, to the Arab American community who sadly have become accustomed to harassment, hatred, discrimination, and racial profiling, both in the streets and airports, especially in the face of US-led wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, the aftermath of September 11th, and the unfortunate and never-ending Israeli-Palestinian conflict. As noted in the resolution, the Arab American people have made significant contribution, contributions in areas such as math, science, engineering, architecture, and so much more. Michael Dubaki, born to Lebanese immigrants, performed the first successful removal to blockages of the carotid artery, developed the concept behind coronary bypass surgery, and was the first to use partial artificial, a partial artificial heart. Arab American inventor Anthony Tony Fidel was hired by Apple CEO Steve Jobs to lead the groups that developed both the iPod and the iPhone. Fidel is now known as the father of the iPod. Finally, my beloved uncle and hero, George Bonura, filed countless patents during his career with the US Navy for his innovative inventions, including radar target simulators and phase noise analyzers. In the US, many Arab Americans continue to uphold and celebrate their native customs and traditions. One of my favorite custom is the first bath. This is a ritual in which newborns are celeb, celebrated and blessed by family, friends, and community during their first bath in a tub filled with warm water and silver coins. A little bit more about Arab Americans. For the most part, we are godly and family-oriented people with words like Insha Allah, God willing, Mashallah, God has willed it, and Nushkur Allah, thank God, embedded in our language. We value family, both immediate and extended. Hence the Arab proverb, blood is thicker than water. We love, cherish, and respect our elders. We love to celebrate with good music, belly dancing, and traditional foods like wakdawali, stuffed grape leaves, mahshi, stuffed squash, tabbouleh, hummus, falafel, babaganuj, and lamb. During celebrations, we express our joy by making the sound of the zagrute, which sounds like this. Arab Americans are traditionally very hospitable and generous. Be careful when complimenting an Arab on something that they're wearing. That person may try to take it off and give it to you. And if taking a casual stroll and you bump into an Arab, that person will likely welcome you into their homes to share a cup of Turkish coffee. And if you're lucky, the coffee grains on your cup will be red to tell your fortune. So I hope you learned something new about the beautiful Arab American culture and community, which I am proud to recognize and celebrate and to be a part of. Thank you again sincerely for passing a resolution and recognition of the Arab American community. Although it's not a panacea for the hatred and discrimination Arab Americans endure daily, it is a positive first step in the right direction. Together, we make the world a better place. Thank you, shukran, and good evening. Masa'il khair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Habash. That was wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. And then virtually, we have, uh, Dr. Keshu, Associate Dean, Online Learning Education Technology Learning Resources.
Hello, everyone. Um, thank you, President, Board of Trustee President Chico, Board of Trustee Untuk, Malauulu, the ambassador, Student Trustee Hernandez, Superintendent President, Dr. Munoz, VPs and colleagues for allowing me to speak today and be here with you. Um, I also thank you, Professor Habash, for your beautiful words. I knew you were going to do an amazing, um, presentation and speech. And so that's great that you, you covered a lot of the things I will not be speaking about today, but you covered everything that, um, the words I didn't have prepared today. Um, it is an honor and a pleasure to be here, um, along with Dr. Professor Samir Habash, representing Arab American students, faculty, and staff. Um, my statements today are brief. Um, I just want to thank the Board of Trustees, our president, VPs, and all of Long Beach City College for supporting in, um, the proclamation resolution of Arab Heritage Month. Um, I also want to thank, um, Michelle Reese, Erin Murphy, and Dr. Karal for helping write the resolution and supporting it and, um, and giving us an opportunity to support and help with that as well. And I also thank, um, Dr. Trustee Zia for bringing this last year and supporting this and making this something that's consistent now at Long Beach City College. Um, as, um, Dr. Habash mentioned, Arab Americans have a long history and have possibly contribute to our country, um, state, local community, and here at Long Beach City College. So your support makes, um, helps, helps make myself and other Arab Americans feel appreciated and welcomed. Um, it supports our culture of care and welcoming environments for our students, staff, and faculty. Um, like all, like some of you already mentioned, we don't have a large, um, Arab American community within Long Beach City College, um, but it does make us feel welcomed. And, um, I myself have always felt welcomed and appreciated here. And actually, I left my previous state and came to California, came to Long Beach because of our diversity and our support for diversity, um, where I've, I've experienced some of the discrimination, um, that Dr. Habash mentioned, um, in my previous state. Um, lastly, I just want to note, um, I want to thank, um, Kristin Olsen and Sandra Sims, who have invited me to the correlation group, um, meeting, um, next in May, an opportunity for us to potentially develop an affinity group for Arab Americans here at Long Beach City College. So I just want to thank everyone. I appreciate it. And trustee Malauulu, um, I am also Palestinian, so I'm always here if you want to talk and, um, and engage any of the Arab culture that you were speaking about earlier. So thank you, and I appreciate it, and I really appreciate, um, your long support and for colleagues, students, and faculty. Thank you.
Dr. Keshu? Um, that, that other state's loss is our gain. We're very happy that you're here with us. So, so thank you so much. Um, thank you for sharing your experience with us. Um, I would like to invite, um, uh, Dr. Habash back to the front so we can take a picture with the resolution. Hi, Mom. You know, I'm not coming back. Well, um, Board Secretary Reese, can we please have a vote?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now we can take a vote. Um, we'll now move on to item 3.2, resolution, uh, thank you so much, Classified School Employee Week. Um, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt resolution number 042623B, declaring the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Classified School Employee Week as recognized by the State of California through a bill signed by the governor in 1920.
Recording in progress.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
I got the second from, uh, Vice President Malauulu. Discussion? Can we have a voice vote, please?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Item 3.3, resolution to approve Cesar Chavez Day as a paid holiday. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt resolution 042623C to approve Cesar Chavez Day as a paid holiday as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? You have a question? Okay. So, Trustee Entuck.
I'm really proud to support this, and I know we had Cesar Chavez Day previously, but I wanted to ask Dr. Munoz, what was the process and why we're doing this? I think it's because of state law. I just wanted to clarify why we're making the change.
Great question. So just some context. Actually, I'm actually really proud of how it kind of came up. As you know, we have a calendar committee. Well, let me take a step back. I'm going to zoom out a little bit. I know the board has questioned in the past, previous years, you know, why Cesar Chavez Day is not recognized, whether or not we should or should not recognize. Well, our calendar committee actually had a conversation, and that's part of our shared governance group come together, and it's a mixture of faculty and administrators that work essentially on the calendar, and they put forward a calendar that included Cesar Chavez as a paid holiday. And so that was exciting, but procedurally, the board would have had it first. But what you're going to see before you tonight is a resolution that allows the board to consider making Cesar Chavez a board holiday, turning it a board holiday, which then would allow the revised calendar that the calendar committee has put forward with Cesar Chavez as the board holiday on it for the May board, which you'll see that calendar kind of after this approval process. And so I think there's different ways that this could have come about, but I really want to credit the faculty and staff and administrators from the calendar committee who essentially really moved.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you, Trustee Entuck. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Madam Secretary.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Item 4.1, ASB President Report, Lana Jolivet. Nice shirt.
Thank you. I figured I'd look official. Nice to see you all. I know it's been a minute. I wanted to share with you all that the ASB will be deciding the ASB grant here next week and those recipients. ASB has voted to extend the Viking Engagement contract for another three years. ASB has also voted to approve the 2023-2024 tentative budget. Yes. And then ASB elections are next week, Monday through Wednesday via Viking Engagement. We also got to visit the mayor's office, which was awesome. So only half the cabinet could make it, but it was definitely like a girl squad that day, and we had so much fun. We got to run around the mayor's office and kind of just see his balcony and see like what he gets to see every single day and got walked through the process of what his day-to-day looks like. So that was honestly an amazing experience, and we had so much fun doing that. So lastly, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned and invited you to Grad Fest. So it'll be 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the LAC campus, and then from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on May 9th on May 11th, I'm sorry, at PCC campus. Sorry. Kind of botched that one a little bit. But if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you can reach out to Kim Hammond, and she'll get you all the correct details. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Item 4.2, Student Trustee Report, Alex Hernandez.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you, President Chico, Dr. Munoz. So for this one, I was actually invited for the Hall of Fame Champion from the Athletics and Foundation Department. So that was an amazing experience to be there and attend, and all the Hall of Famers that made it into, you know, were indicted into the Hall of Fame Champion. We also did have our conference, our SSC at the end of March. So it was nice, an event. We actually collected a couple of our community colleges' members to advocate for the whole community system on a federal-state legislation. Also, I was invited by the city councilwoman, Dr. Suley Sura, for the Sangra first-ever event, which was amazing. We had the Buddhist blessing. Over 100 Buddhists were there, and so we had the blessings from them. Also was invited for the building and rim cutting. What an amazing building for our students, right? All the new projections and computer, all the advanced technology. Loved it. Loved the whole new lockdown, of course. That's one of the more important details of that building, for me at least. And then the DEIA kickoff event. And I really want to speak about that. I think this is actually a great month for all of my FIA fellow peers, right? Especially for a student like myself that came from a background, right, where didn't feel that I was, you know, safe or I didn't fit into this, right? Someone that was considered property, right, of the system, and overcame all that, right? So I think this is an amazing one for these fellow students. And I can definitely, definitely advocate that we are not here for that, right? That this is a community, and we're helping build those, you know, bridges for them to advocate and continue their growth. So saying that, I want to leave you guys with one last announcement. I know that all applications are coming in from the UCs and Cal states, right? So saying that, I was admitted to a couple of colleges. I'm still waiting on offers, right? I'm the asset, so I said it that way. I'm waiting for offers. But I currently did get admitted to UC Irvine, so an eater. And I just heard last week from Berkeley, so I was admitted at Berkeley as well. So I'm currently waiting on two other ones, but I'll let Dr. Munoz touch on the revenue, touch on that story. But thank you so much for having me, and definitely this is not the last time you guys will see me here. And that will be the end of my report.
And I think that offer to Berkeley includes a full-ride scholarship, right? That's pretty impressive. So, and congratulations on that. Item 4.3, Academic Senate President Report. May I have missed Mudroni?
Mudroni, yeah. That was close. Good, thank you. Good evening, Board President Chico, Superintendent President Munoz, and distinguished board members. This week is Black Student Success Week, and we have many DEI month events as well. There are a lot of events coming up, including cultural graduation celebrations on May 19th and 20th. Dario, if you don't mind popping up that PowerPoint I sent. Yes, I have some pictures for y'all, too. But before I do that, I wanted to let you know that I wanted to thank all of the faculty here, here, all of the faculty across the campus, who voted on a new hybrid membership model, which we now have in our constitution, which was now also approved and voted on by two-thirds of our faculty here, full-time faculty. And I wanted to show you all that this constitution and membership model that we voted on is much more inclusive, and we have so many changes. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my fabulous, fabulous legislative liaison on the Senate, Dr. Jerome Hunt, for all of his work for pushing this forward. So thank you, Dr. Hunt. Can we move to the next slide? Thank you. We also, we have a big last month. We also passed a resolution, and I also wanted to thank all of you here in red shirts, the negotiation team, because we worked together, the Senate and FA, to devise this resolution in partnership. And it's a resolution to include student learning outcomes as part of our course syllabi. I'd like to read the two resolves to you. The Academic Senate affirms its position that current and accurate student learning outcomes from the college's officially approved course outline of record should appear on all syllabi distributed to students and classes conducted by Long Beach City College. And be it further resolved, the Long Beach Senate supports efforts by the Assessment of Student Learning Outcomes Subcommittee, the Committee on Curriculum Instruction, the Accreditation Steering Committee, and other responsible stakeholders at the college to ensure that the college complies with accreditation standard 2A3. Thank you. Can we move to the next slide? So I want to acknowledge the people on this screen and thank them. We had statewide plenary last week, and these four other fabulous people decided to take time out of their weekdays and their Saturday, yes, they do it all day on Saturday, to join me at statewide Senate plenary this last week in Anaheim. We had a blast. We learned a lot. And Christine Charles Bohannon, my VP on the Senate, is here. So I want to acknowledge her presence here in the audience today as well. So thank you. Let's go to that next slide, please, Dario. Thank you. So I know you all don't hear a lot of things that our students are doing from the faculty, but I wanted to highlight this. Janine Pliska, who's our Honors Coordinator, asked that I share this with you. We had five LBCC students presented their own original research. Nine LBCC students came to help moderate this presentation. It was the Honors Transfer Council of California's annual conference at UCI, and it gives community college honors students the opportunity to present their academic work. They're invited to do research-based presentations, posters, and creative performances reflecting inquiry into the humanities, sciences, arts, social sciences, and pre-professional programs. I asked her for pictures, and these were the only ones she had. But I want to call out the students, Dani Uk, Olivia Ferguson, Danielle Kuzensov, Kendra O'Neill, and Emma Manetta. Thank you all for what you do for the college and for us students to represent us there at the Honors Council for California's conference. Last slide, the Labor Center, and I want to thank Frank Perez, who is our Labor Center Coordinator. We had our Ethnic Studies III Summit, and this was a partnership between the History, Political Science Faculty, Ethnic Studies, Reading Teacher Prep, SJIC, Student Equity, FPD. And we also had all of our new faculty. Those 38 faculty also attended this to learn a little bit more. So, you know, we don't highlight the faculty enough at the board meeting with images, and so I wanted you all to see all of these amazing people that you don't ever always get to see here, sitting in the audience and showing up here. So thank you all. All right. I don't think I have any more slides, but I do have some more info for you. Curriculum. The Curriculum Committee approved eight new non-critic parallel courses from the COS department. Sorry, had to give props to my department. The Curriculum Committee also approved a modification to Human Services AA degree. The degree is now called Social Work Degree, and I run out of time. So I want to thank the peer reviewers on the Curriculum Committee for wrapping up the routine review of course outline of records for the 143 courses. And I also want to thank Doug Raffel for his leadership. And that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simone. We're going to go to item 4.4, Classified Senate President Report, Adler.
Good evening, everyone. So we are excited and have been having fun at all the events that have been going on. And I knew other people would talk about them, and I was right. So I'm not going to list all the fun events, but just so many great ways to see the community and public and students and colleagues in person. And we're looking forward to the many that are being held towards the end of the semester. So make sure you check, as usual, item nine on the agenda to see the nine new classified professionals that have been hired recently and welcome them to the college. You'll also see that we have one recent retirement, and that is TCC graveyard custodian Malcolm Phillips. You can see all the jobs he's had at the college listed on the document attached to that item. And as usual, I got a little quote from one of his colleagues. Malcolm is a man of his word with a big heart. He gave whatever he could to LBCC and was very dedicated. He was honest and didn't play games. So we're going to wish Malcolm luck and happiness in all his future endeavors. So, Dario, next slide? So this month, Classified Senate, Classified Hero is Kimberly Carrose. She's a Maticulation Program Assistant at the Welcome Center. And so we've been doing this for a while, and the people that nominated her did a little play on our superpowers category. Super smile, hugs, warm welcome, make students feel at ease, super helpful. So one of the people that nominated her said, "I am always reassured knowing that Kim is one of the first people new students meet, because I know they are getting the warmest welcome to LBCC possible. She's very kind, welcoming, and knows everything about the process and the school. She's the best person to represent our college to newcomers." And what Kimberly said is, "My favorite aspect of working at LBCC is the opportunity to work in a community college with such diversity. I enjoy our students and what I do, the team I work with, and the environment in which I work. I consider this to be my second family." So many more activities coming as we're ending the spring semester, which is always my favorite time of year, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 4.5, LBCC FA Bargaining President Report, Suzanne Engler.
Good evening, Board President Chico, Superintendent Mike Munoz, other members of the DAIS. Tonight, I'm yielding my time to our negotiations team.
Long time no see. My name is Sean Dinsis. Again, I'm from the History Department, and I just wanted to make a couple points that have been pointed out to us or that are important to our faculty membership with respect to feedback we've gotten back on our negotiations updates thus far. One of the most common pieces of feedback that the negotiations team has received from members in the physical and biological sciences particularly is the need for more specific language in the contract dealing with safety equipment and oversight. We're getting reports of inadequate provision of eyewashes, safety showers, fire extinguishers, et cetera. And I really want to echo Professor Arias's invitation to everyone on the board to visit the Biological and Physical Science Laboratory so you can get a firsthand sense of the deficiencies that they're talking about. And FA really doesn't think that, you know, language about eyewashes, fire extinguishers should be controversial as we try to work with the board to rectify these issues. The second point has to do with salary. We understand that the district is concerned and anxious about maintaining a healthy reserve balance as supplemental funding for COVID ends amid uncertainty about the immediate future of the US economy increases. And we understand that this is a major reason that the district has offered an inflation-adjusted pay cut of COLA minus 4%. But we wanted to point out to the board that reserves have not just been increasing during the COVID pandemic. In fact, from 2004 to 2018, reserve funds, according to fiscal reports issued by the Chancellor's Office, went from $6.5 million at LBCC to $41 million between 2004 and 2018. Even adjusted for inflation, that's over a 370% increase. With that in mind, we truly believe that the district has room to maneuver in terms of allocating the resources to faculty necessary to ensure that we continue to maximize student success. And I just want to reinforce the need for us to get to parity with other campuses on department head stipends, which have been frozen since 2014. At other campuses, even for small department head stipends are into the five figures. On our campus, even our most, our department heads from our largest departments are still around $7,000 for a stipend. Thank you.
Hello again. So I won't get into many details, but I just want to know, I just want to let you know that the FA members and myself acknowledge that the board is committed to the success of this college and the students we serve. And the faculty are your proud partners in this endeavor. But I'm puzzled by the disconnect between this guiding goal and the lack of progress in negotiations in regards to the full-time faculty. If you believe, and I know you do, I know all of you do, if you believe that LBCC is the best, that it offers our students the best education possible, then you must support a fair and equitable contract for the faculty. A few things to highlight is the district rejected the full lecture lab parity. We have a lot of nursing faculty here. They really, really, our members are really, really eager to see that parity. The refusal to consider 80% online teaching load. I think this is viewed as a negative when it really should be a positive. We can offer different modalities for our students and recruit more students to come here. And then something that is long overdue is addressing that the ADN and VN nursing programs really put in 197 days. Right now, they're doing that on their own accord, and they've not been compensated ever. I think that one of the crown jewels of Long Beach City College is our nursing department, and that's reflected by how many people declare a nursing major. 4,000 students come here just to declare a nursing major. Not all of them make it there. They find different pathways, but that's a major attractor, almost one-fourth of our enrollment. of our enrollment is, is coming here due to these nursing faculty. And to really show that the board supports them, moving to that 197-day schedule, I think, is paramount. And, and I urge you all, now is the time for the board to show their support for faculty. And are we going to do this or not? Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go on, Suzanne.
I'm going to use the remainder of my time with the video PowerPoint. Okay. I had 27 seconds. I was just...
Dario, can we bring?
I think that's the last one, but I will just use the remainder of my time to go through them a little quicker. And these, these are our faculty that couldn't be here tonight, representing their different departments, just communicating to you via this PowerPoint, and our fabulous nursing faculty that are here, that, that, just that they're supporting negotiations and... Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Suzanne.
Item 4.6, AFT Bargaining President Report, Robert Remedy. We will move on to 4.7, JY Bargaining President, Crystal Mahia. Representative. So, we will move on to item 5.1, Superintendent President Report. Munoz.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and members of the community. I am pleased to share my report from the month of April with you. Like to start off by just wishing everyone a happy American Month. It's also DEIA Awareness Month, and this week is Black Student Success Week. So, lots of great things happening. So, for my first slide, as you know, Long Beach City College continues to become a more welcoming and inclusive campus community. This, this is evident in part by how we celebrate our diversity through the variety of cultural heritage celebrations we conduct and participate in. I would like to kick off my report tonight by showing you a quick video that highlights some of the events that happened in March during Women's History Month.
Welcome to our Women's History Month kickoff celebration. This year's national theme for Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell our stories. In alignment with that theme, our local LBCC theme this year is celebrating women who tell their stories and elevating the women of Long Beach City College. So, as much as we have progressed over these years and that we've made over the last century, we still have many barriers to break. You know, we can all advance, in large part because a lot of remarkable women have paved the way. They mentored us and built a community among women to lift us all up as we climb. And by example, we can take our sisters with us, and that's because empowered women empower women. And always remember, when you overcome your obstacle and you break down a door, don't forget to hold that door open for your sisters coming on in behind you. Welcome them and show them around because there's enough space for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, this month, we are pleased to celebrate Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Awareness Month. We had three of our colleagues, Jesse Maroquín, Devon Scott, and Sarah Rodriguez, featured in a great video to tell us more about DEI Awareness Month. We still have one more workshop tomorrow at noon in M129 to examine the intersection of equity, access, and cultural norms for deaf and hard-of-hearing students receiving instruction in a hearing classroom. We invite everyone to come out and join in this conversation. So, I have some great news. The California, the Cali, excuse me, the Community College League of California informed us that two Long Beach City College students have been selected to receive the 2023 All-California Award from Phi Theta Kappa. Congratulations to Christine Lomelie and Sierra Elena McNally, yet another example of how our excellent students are out there representing the LBCC. Three of our colleagues were in Tempe, Arizona, last month to accept their honors as the LBCC cohort for the 2022-2023 League Excellence Awards. Big congratulations again to Reading and Teacher Preparation faculty member Tricia Wilking, Senior Network Administrator Arnie Nystrom, and Director of Planning Jennifer Holgram. Thank you for your incredible dedication to our students and the Long Beach College community. I was one of the 200 fortunate people who attended the 2023 Hall of Champions to recognize eight outstanding LBCC athletic honorees. One noteworthy first made this year's extra special. Will Shaw was honored as LBCC's first black head football coach, not only here at LBCC, but the first for all California community colleges. To see so many of his longtime fans and his family come out to the grand to support him, and the 2023 class was very heartwarming. Thank you to the foundation, to Dean Tutor, and the Athletic Department for always creating a great event. We also held a media event last month at our new Aquatics Center with Special Olympics Southern California. It was incredible to see the joy in the faces of our new athletic champions and partners with this respected international organization. Here's a video to tell you more about this new partnership.
Athletics is a special source of pride here at LBCC. We are home to champions and Olympians. Long Beach City College has 93 state championships, more than any other community college in the state of California. And tonight, we are adding additional Olympians. We are celebrating a new relationship between Long Beach City College and Special Olympics of Southern California. We are so excited that the Special Olympics of Southern California will be calling Long Beach City College the new training site for their swimming, basketball, bocce ball, and track and field athletes.
Been able to establish this relationship with the Special Olympics of Southern California and your athletes. These facilities, they're for everyone to enjoy regardless of age, fitness level, or degree of participation.
It's great to hear the strong history of sports, and that's really also what our organizations have in common, that passion of sports and community. Special Olympics transforms lives through the power of sports and the impact of our programs. They lead to building self-confidence for our athletes, more independence, better health, and also they lead to acceptance and inclusion in the communities that we serve.
I've been swimming in the Special Olympics since I was a teenager. I am honored to have a new home for Special Olympics. I love Long Beach City College. Thank you, Long Beach City College. We appreciate you.
That was amazing. I think we all agree, what a great use of our facilities, right, and our partnership. So, we also opened up our campus again to the Festival of Great Reads this year. It was great to see so many members of the community out to celebrate the gift of reading and culture. Long Beach City College spent April 1st and April 2nd being part of two significant events in the Cambodian community. The weekend was kicked off at our Pacific Coast Campus, where Councilwoman Suli Saro hosted her first San Kranta Celebration. Here's a quick highlight video of the festival at PCC that we shared on social media to invite the community to attend the day. Now, the following day, we had a huge turnout of students, colleagues, and families join us for the 15th Annual Cambodia Town Parade, where President Chico served as Grand Marshall. We have a brief video. As you can see, we had a great turnout and a wonderful time on Sunday. Our APID Student Club, APID Affinity Group, and the PCC Child Development Center Kids Cheer Team and more were in attendance. Thanks to the Public Affairs and Marketing Team for helping to organize our parade participation, and our Facilities Team for stepping up to assist with our float. And I'm going to go off script for a moment. I just have to say, you know, it really makes my heart full to see Pacific Coast Campus really get the attention it deserves, right? To be able to open up that campus to our community. You know, PCC is in the heart of Cambodia Town, and so I'm just really grateful to work at an institution where we take our inclusion and diversity seriously. So, again, thank you to all. Speaking of our Public Affairs and Marketing Team, we also need to say congratulations to them. Our talented LBCC team brought home an armful of trophies from the Community College Public Relations Organization Conference a couple weeks ago. They brought home three first-place trophies for outdoor media, internal communications, and poster categories and more. Congratulations, team. On April 20th, we celebrated the brand-new M Building with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We also got word that Building M received the Education Community College Project Award for projects between $50 million and $100 million from the Construction Management Association of America. This award is in recognition of the quality of construction, completion of the project on schedule, and as the first design-built project in California. Congratulations to Walter Johnson and the Facilities Team and the Kadorba Corporation for this recognition. Let's give them a big round of applause as well. And I'm going to say something. I'm sorry, I keep going off my script. I'm going back to, to Building M. You know, when we were at the Building M ribbon-cutting, a faculty member who retired, he spent almost 30 years here, or over, close to 30 years at Long Beach City College. He came up to me, he's like, you know, I just wanted to come, and I used to work in the old M Building, you know, before we tore it down. And so, he went and found what he said would have been his office in the old building and the new building, and he said he started to cry because he saw the new facilities and what an experience it was going to be for the faculty and students to be able to teach and learn in that space. So, I thought that was very heartwarming, and I wanted to say, share that with all of you. So, let's talk about the Spring Dance Concert. After weeks of rehearsal, I was honored to perform with our talented students at the April 21st and 22nd Spring Dance Contest, Concert, excuse me. To witness all of the work that goes into these productions was absolutely astounding. I must thank our brilliant faculty, Stephanie Powell and Martha Pentuan, and the incredible student dancers for their training and encouragement. In case we're wondering, yes, you can catch repeat performances on our cable station. I'll tell you, I, you know, as president, it's a new role for me somewhat, and when I was Vice President of Student Services, I always got to be connected with students, and so I don't have that as much in this role. So, to be able to go to practice and dress rehearsal and tech rehearsal and, and dance alongside the students, it was exactly what my soul needed in this very moment. So, it was a great experience, and I can't, I don't know, we don't have a video. Yeah, you can, you can catch me on Instagram. Just kidding. No, but I, but I really wanted to just express my, my deep appreciation to our students. Their talent and artistry was on full display. So, again, thank you to the faculty as well as our students. So, it's certainly been a busy month for us. We are in the final stretch towards the end of the year celebrations and our June 8 commencement ceremony. So, I look forward to seeing many of you out at the different events as we celebrate our students and their accomplishments. So, thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Munoz. We're out there doing some great teams. The, the team is, you know, the Communications Team, Marketing Team, that's so impressive. We're going to move on to item 5.2, New Board Policies and Administrative Procedures. Chapter 3, General Institution. Board Policy 3225 is a second reading, and Administrative Procedure 3225 is informational. So, we have an action, information, and second reading. So, the Board of Trustees, it's recommended that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the new board policy. Chapter 3, General Institution. Board Policy 3225, second reading as submitted. Is there a motion and a second?
No move.
And a second from Vice President Malauulu. Any discussion or questions? See none? Can we have a voice vote, please?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item, we're going to go to six, item 6.1, Sabbatical Report from Carolyn Castano. And Dr. Lee Douglas will introduce Carolyn Castano.
Thank you, Board President Chico, members of the board, Superintendent President Munoz, and Long Beach City College family. It is my pleasure to introduce to you this evening Professor Carolyn Castano. Professor Castano is an Associate Professor of Painting and Drawing in Long Beach City College's Visual Media Arts Department. She has taught at Long Beach City College for 18 years, starting out as an adjunct, and she began her full-time position eight years ago. She's a Los Angeles-based artist whose work in painting, drawing, video, and mixed-media installations has been exhibited both nationally and internationally. Ms. Castano has exhibited her work in Cali is Cali at the Orange County Museum of Art. We must risk delight 20 artists from Los Angeles at the 56th Biennial de Vizia. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that too badly. She's a graduate of the UCLA School of Art and Architecture and the San Francisco Art Institute. Professor Castano is presenting on her sabbatical project entitled Cali is Cali. Professor Castano, the floor is yours.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Superintendent President Munoz. Thank you, Vice President Douglas, Board of Trustees. Lovely to be here. Every talk and presentation has been so moving. My name's Carolyn Castano, and I'm Associate Professor of Drawing and Painting in the Visual Media Arts Department. Let's see, how does this go? Okay. So, first, I want to thank you for supporting the sabbatical program. The sabbatical time away from teaching allows instructors to develop our research flex, our mind muscles, and of course, bring all of our new information and creativity back to our students in the classroom. I want to share with you a little bit about my work and my sabbatical project. I'm a painter by training, but my professional visual art lies in what is called painting in the expanded field, otherwise, painting with every... art lies in what is called painting in the expanded field, otherwise, painting with everything else. My sabbatical proposal was written the year I began looking at photographs, ephemera, and objects from my late father's archive. The project is called Cali es Cali, or Cali is Cali, named after a popular expression in Cali, Colombia, where my family is from, as well as LL Cool J's Going Back to Cali, and that's where we are now. So that's a picture of my father. I used my father's photographs to explore identity, family, migration, landscape, immigration. Sorry, I'm excited. And I paired the photographs and objects with drawings and paintings that I made in order to explore my family's history and identity, and also the way that immigrants from all countries in the US and all over the world, there's immigrants there too, feel simultaneously that they're in one place and yet in another, in a new home, and also very much in the old place they called home. My sabbatical was very fruitful. I had a show at PCC Boone Art Gallery, the Pasadena City College Art Gallery, and where I was invited as an artist in residence. And I began during this show to pair my father's photographs with my own paintings and drawings, and to make that connection between the landscape and place, and also with his photographs depicting my family in LA and also in Colombia. So here's a wall displaying that. So, what else? My work has often featured flora and fauna of the Americas, and during this project, my illustrations of the flora and fauna started to emerge from photographs, and so I made this installation of enlarged photographs of my family. During the show at PCC, I started to pair my paintings with physical objects, and one of them was this textile piece that you see there on the right, and that's a Colombian ruana. And a ruana is like a poncho, or maybe a serape. And it is something that's worn in the Andes or all throughout the Americas, and in Colombia, it's worn by city folks and country folk. This ruana element or textile piece became the philosophical cornerstone of my project, and I began to think of it as not only this garment that my aunt had passed down to me, and there you see her on the left, coming off the Mexicana Airlines, holding the ruana that about 25 years ago was passed down to me. I saw it as a symbolic item that represented migration and identity for my family and for other families as well. This is a show I had at the Walter Maciel Gallery in Culver City in September of 2022, and during that show, I made a series of paintings that combined my watercolor paintings of the landscape with also geometric stripes and patterns that come from the ruana patterns that you might find in the Americas or in Colombia. So the title of the show is called Future Ruana. I also made experimental textile pieces inspired by this garment. I worked with a seamstress, a good friend of mine, and I silk-screened photographs from my father's archive onto fabric, and then we worked together to construct them into wearable garments. The new kind of experimental ruana became almost like a, like a letterman jacket with appliques of birds and floras and text that read Cali, like California, and Cali, like Cali, Colombia. Invitation, some installation shots. There's some LBCC students who came to my show. I also had other opportunities. I was invited by the Metro Arts Project in Los Angeles to create an artwork for their Metro Arts Project, and so this is a composite or photo collage based on a passport photo of my father with my illustrations superimposed over him, elements of old photographs, social security card numbers with the numbers crossed out, airline tickets and what have you, all kind of arranged together to create this unique portrait. And that was displayed for about a year in the Union Station walkway there. There's my son posing in front. And so it was also the place, they had a major COVID testing site there, and so every time we would have to go get tested for, you know, start of school, we would go visit my dad. So that was kind of fun. I was also invited to create the book cover for a book called The Motherload: A Pandemic Experience, which was a collection of pieces, written pieces by women and women, female identifying writers about their experience as mothers during the pandemic. And that's Maureen Moore, who formerly was co-director of the Library Allowed Series in downtown LA. And finally, I had the opportunity to exhibit my entire project at the LBCC Art Gallery last month. For students, it was a kind of abbreviated version of the project because I shared it with two other faculty, Stas Orlovsky and Christopher Chin, but I was able to share my work and my process with students during an artist talk and also impromptu classroom visits. And finally, I just want to say that my work with my students and the work that I work in personally, professionally, continues on with them in my mentoring and in my lesson planning. My expertise in painting in the expanded field or two-dimensional art that goes beyond the traditional parameters allows me to parlay this information to my students, making their own work more competitive when applying for jobs or preparing portfolios for transfer to a four-year university. And just lastly, as part of my sabbatical proposal, I produced a catalog of images of my exhibition, which I will share with you, and you're welcome to have if you'd like. And it's also part of an educational component that the students are welcome to use or other faculty can use as well. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time. Thank you. It's beautiful, beautiful work. I'm going to open this up now to questions or comments, Vice President Malauulu.
Professor Castano, congratulations on a really nice, just such a good sabbatical experience that you had and you shared with us. I love the diversity of the different exhibits that you participated in. I love the cover of Motherload. I want to read that novel now, after hearing...
I'll bring you a book, anyone who would like one.
No, after hearing, I want to read about those experiences about mothers during COVID, especially if it's your art on the cover. That's fantastic. I have one question, but I mean, I can talk forever on how impressed I am by this work, and forgive my ignorance because I don't know, but in order for you to, as a professor on sabbatical, in order for you to have your work exhibited in an exhibit, in a gallery, do you need an agent? Or did you have, is that additional work that you had to do on your own, or is there a circuit that, like, because I'm just thinking how much work it is for an artist, but then you're an artist who's creating, you're an artist who's designing, you're an artist who's, you know, and then to have to go out there and find the place, if you can speak briefly on that?
Sure. As part of my professional practice as an artist, I, well, first of all, I'm represented by this gallery, Walter Maciel Gallery. And so we, you know, in the year before my sabbatical, or when I was writing my proposal, I approached him about when I would have my, when I could have a show, if I could tie it together with my sabbatical project, and he said, sure. And so that was great. Many artists don't always have a gallery relationship set up, and so part of my proposal or part of my sabbatical time was also to have meetings with curators, with writers, with collectors, with prospective galleries, maybe from other cities, and artists are constantly working on that networking kind of relationship and getting the word out and forming those relationships. So usually, a gallery is like an agent, and so I guess that's, yeah. It's also a full-time job sometimes, so. Yeah, I bet. And any other questions, Dr. Baxter, did you say?
Okay, I'm a sewer, I'm a quilter. So I was very impressed with the textile art that you did. I'm impressed with all of it, of course, but, and I loved how you made the ruana from different fabrics and different things. So congratulations, wonderful show.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. We would love to see that. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your experience.
Thank you.
And for sharing your emotion, too. I mean, that's really beautiful. You can tell how much love and emotion you have in it. So thank you.
Item 6.2 is Campus Facilities Update. Dr. Chip West, Vice President Administrative and Business Services, and Melissa Infocino, interim Vice President Economic Workforce Development and Government Affairs, will provide a presentation on campus facilities updates, and an executive summary is attached. This is an information presentation. Dr. West, would you like to?
Thank you, Board President Chico. VP Infocino and I are happy to be here tonight to kind of give you an update on some projects. Next slide. So we're going to talk about four projects today. These are projects that are not included within our 2041 Facilities Master Plan, and so there'll be updates on student housing, our LAC Building S, or otherwise known as Veterans Memorial Stadium, our North Long Beach Higher Education Center, and North Long Beach Student Housing and Higher Education Complex. Next slide. So I'll just say that we're going to go through all of these. There might be a lot of detail, and we'll be happy to take questions in the end as we go through. So as you know, we submitted a proposal to the California Community College Chancellor's Office for the Higher Education Student Housing Grant Program earlier this semester. That project included a four-story facility located here at LAC, approximately 91,721 square feet, and it was about 421 beds. 411 of those would be revenue-generating beds. The purpose was to really help our students' educational attainment, really expanding our resources to fully encompass our students' basic needs as they pursue higher education. The estimated project budget proposal included about $103 million project total cost. We were excited to find out that we made the list, and we're currently awaiting direction from California Community College Chancellor's Office. However, given some of the recent funding challenges that we've seen, we believe it's probably unlikely that our project will be funded, which was a disappointment for us. And so next steps as we move forward, we're looking for board direction on whether or not, as we know, this is a priority, to explore this housing options with a possible 2024 bond measure going forward. Next slide. We also want to give an update on the LAC Building S, or Veterans Memorial Stadium. As you know, within the 2041 Facilities Master Plan, it had renovation to the stadium of approximately $88 million. After multiple infrastructure studies, it was determined in 2022 that a renovation would not address the issues, and that our only viable path forward was demolition and new construction. The total estimate right now for that project is about $150 million. So with board direction in December in 2022, we held an industry day. We were very excited to host six groups that brought proposals to us to explore the possibility of options for P3 or partnerships, public-private partnerships to look, partner with us going forward. And despite the strong interest, which we were really pleased, none of those options really presented a viable path going forward. So again, our staff is requesting board direction on whether or not we can explore this also within a possible 2024 bond measure. Next slide, and VP Infocino will take over. I'll just say she's provided exceptional leadership and direction on these projects, so I'm excited to hear her updates here.
Thank you, Dr. West. Good evening. I am really excited to talk about the North Long Beach Higher Education Center. This has been a long time coming. I know that we've been talking about this since pre-pandemic, so I'm excited to say construction is underway, and we anticipate it will be done this summer. If you'll remember, this is a facility that's being leased by the City of Long Beach, the lab, and they're providing tenant improvement. We've already purchased the 30% computer lab and the furnishings. They are awaiting in storage as we speak, and our next step is to enter into an MOU with the city to be able to occupy that space. We're going to be offering non-credit courses, small business advising. It will really be a one-stop-shop service to the community. In anticipation of going out into North Long, which you know, we've not had a physical presence out there, and in many cases have lost students to Cerritos, or really not reached a population of the community that we want to, we engaged with a firm to do on-the-ground conversations, focus groups, interviews, surveys. Vivian Shimoyama, Lizette Flores, and Sharon Bigg Jackson have been doing that work. So asking folks what they want to see from us, what are some of the barriers to entering college, when do they want to have services, what time of day, what kind of things would they expect from us. So we're excited, we're going to receive that report within the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a presentation from them on that, and I'm happy to report back to the board on some of those details. That will inform what we offer there, and the kind of staffing and the hours that we'll have. Lastly, I'll share that the city is working on an MOU right now. We've been meeting with them, and so we anticipate an agreement to come soon for us to be able to occupy that space. Long-term, the city plans on also having another operator in there, a nonprofit that will come in and share the space with us. We also anticipate maybe you and we'll be in that space, which is our workforce investment. Next slide. And this one is a new one, a similar name. This is the housing complex. We've also referred to it as the three parcels. This is around the corner from the North Long Beach Higher Education Center, right in the same area as the Michelle Obama Library. These are three parcels, which we've been looking at for a little while, which the city has now officially declared a surplus property. We have looked at possibly putting classrooms and housing. We worked with the bond team, shout out to Hakeem, who came in new, I think was here his first week, and really worked diligently to put together a proposal for that property. In anticipation of them declaring it property last year, we put in a letter of intent to develop it. So we're looking at potentially 36 beds. We were hoping this could be family housing, so for those students who actually have family, children, are caretakers, to have a place where they can also enjoy student housing and then the costs that come with that, affordable costs. We're in, oh, and I'm also excited to say we had the opportunity to enter into a community project request with our new Congresswoman, Nenah Aragon, for an earmark. We were selected for $1 million in funding, so fingers crossed that that continues to make it through the appropriations process, but that would help to fund this project. And then our next steps are that we're going to be entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city for transfer of that property. We actually met with the city attorney and the property division to talk through that this week. So we have a draft from them, and we'll be able to move forward with that, given the board's direction. So thank you so much.
And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
President Chico.
Rest easy.
Thank you. Great presentation. A couple of touchpoints. Where did we rank in the applications pool, and where was Cerritos?
So we ranked number 17 out of 20. Again, making the list was a priority for us. We did make the list. I believe Cerritos was ranked number one.
I see. And then going back to what, Melissa, you were sharing, is it, as a priority, are students? I'm trying to better understand. Was it students writ large with North Long Beach Student Housing for students? Can you say a little bit more about that?
Sure, sure. And this is not written in stone, but the idea was that, yes, this would be for our students. students. It was designed, however, different from the project that Dr. West spoke about. This one was designed more for families, so students who have dependents. Whereas a lot of the other spaces have traditionally been designed as shared, single-bed spaces, which doesn't necessarily always work for folks who may have.
When you say students, our students, is that correct?
Our LBC students.
Not others. Okay, great. That's great. Thank you so much.
I could also expand. As you know, when some of these proposals were developed, we were more optimistic about securing the state funding. And now that we know that we're not, I don't want to say we know, but it's looking less likely that we will secure the state funding. I think there is opportunities to rethink the North Long Beach Center of whether or not that housing would be for students with dependents or just, I think there's still opportunity to kind of massage that.
Great, thank you. Trustee Baxter.
Yes. This is funny. When I was interviewed about the North Long Beach project, I said, Dr. Munoz is going to kill me because I think you ought to put two stories on the building and put in student housing. And then she said, well, that's what we're going to do. I go, oh, oh, okay. Okay, so I'm all in favor of this. As most of you knows, Trustee Zia and I are on the Helping Homeless LBCC Students Associate Group. And when we started at the very beginning, which was seven years ago, I had suggested that we make housing part of the Long Beach College Promise. There are 3,000 Long Beach Unified School students who are housing insecure. And although I'm not against people with children, I think this is another option we should look at. And perhaps the Long Beach Unified would like to become partners with us in the funding of this, because this is a major concern to them, too. They actually have a vice president, Aaron Simon, who sits in that aspect. She's part of Student Services, but that's part of her area, too. So I just want to propose that as a possibility. I was a married student with a child when I went to college, but my rent was $35 a month. And so I didn't need, no, I don't. It was just a few years ago. So, you know, but this is a real concern for parents today. So I'm not trying to take away from that, but just offering another possibility. And I'm not speaking for Trustee Zia. She has her own mind.
Is that all? Yeah, perfect. Any other questions? Trustee Ente.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, the update, the team's work, and glad to see we continue to make progress. A couple of questions, and I know that there's still some uncertainty in our analysis of our application. I know we applied last year, this year. Did the criteria change? Or have we done any analysis? What led to our ranking position? Fingers crossed we get the funds and the May revised ultimate June budget. But if we have to apply again, what would we, what are ways we?
I would say that, you know, in our analysis and looking at what projects were funded, a lot of them that were scored very high had an intersegmental component. So that was one piece that we didn't have in ours. We had reached out to CSH Long Beach a few times to see if there would be an opportunity to partner with them, and there wasn't really interest there. And some of those projects that were at the top had those intersegmental pieces. All of the indications going into the application process, I talked about it a lot going in, that most folks, we did not think were going to be putting in local dollars to match. All of the consultants that we had working did not think that would be the case. In the end, those that were at the top of that list had significant dollars that they brought to the table. And so they ranked significantly higher than we did. We put in a portion of money that we were able to. As you know, we don't have a dedicated pot of money with or designation within the bond, so we couldn't really offer more than we had. But we offered everything we did have available and put that in as part of it, but it wasn't a major portion of the ask. So those are the two big, I think, pieces where, as we look to do this again, those will be parts that we look to see if we can tweak those and adjust going forward.
And then also, I did, I was able to, we've been, the last couple of months, in uptown North Long Beach, the community survey and interviews have been happening. I was able to, the consultant reached out, talk about focus group, feedback, and it's been something that frankly, we've been, you know, the community has wanted for almost a decade of community resources in North Long Beach. It's had the most population growth, has the most young people in the city, has the most adults with some or no college degrees. It, you know, if we say we want to increase our enrollment, revenue, win-win scenario for the community, 905 North Long Beach. And a report will be forthcoming to the board, back from the consultant, about the vision and dreams of community members who, you know, want to have business, financial literacy, business entrepreneurial classes, TSL classes, computer lab, you know, potentially student housing. There's so much going on along that corridor. We call it the education corridor because you have Jordan High School, you have Fountain Park, you have the new Michelle Obama Library, and now Long Beach City College there. This is a community that's been historically under-resourced, immigrant community, largely a very diverse Black and Brown community, not been allocated the resources. So excited to see you continue to move forward. This is something I campaigned on and have advocated for many years and appreciate the due diligence we've gone through evaluating different options and processes, and thankful to the City of Long Beach for their partnership that we were able to work towards. Almost there. Almost there.
Almost there. You know, the Ron Arias Health Clinic is up there, too.
Right.
So it's just, and thank you for your advocacy. You've never stopped pushing for this. We appreciate that. Dr. Munoz?
Thank you. So as you saw in Vice President West's presentation, there was kind of a footnote of we would like to seek direction from the board. So as you know, in anticipation, right? So I think there's two things really driving this. I think one is, you know, we submitted this application in hopes and high hopes that we were going to be competitive and place higher than we did. Knowing that how things are playing out in the state legislature and that there are conversations about, you know, there are folks in the legislature and recommendations from the LAO to move some of this fund to the UCs and CSUs, it's looking less likely. And then also, when we look at what we need to do about that stadium and how even our Industry Partner Day that you had purchased, you didn't yield, kind of thought it would yield, I think now we're at the point where whether or not we would like to seek direction, if we should start exploring a potential bond campaign in 2024. And so I think really today's update is more than an update, it's also seeking direction if this is to get a temperature. So again, just to be clear, this is not asking the board to commit and vote tonight, or because there's actually no vote, we're just looking for direction to say, yes, we're going to do a bond. But it's really more of, yes, begin to explore, begin to have those conversations with those consultants, to develop a plan, a timeline of what it would look like if we would be going for a bond in 2024, whether that's the primary election in March or that is the general election in November. And so really wanted to pause and kind of get a pulse of the board and see if we could get direction on that, because that is the path we want to pursue. Because really, at this point, that is going to probably be the most likely path to be able to achieve the two big outstanding projects that we want to achieve, right? Student housing as well as the modernization of that stadium, which has to be a teardown and rebuild, right? New construction project. That's where we're at. And so I want to see where the board is at for that and if we can reach consensus on the direction.
Vice President Chico.
I thought we had another option, P3, and we were examining that, public-private partnership. But I'm only hearing one option from you presented here with a bond, potential bond for 2024. Am I missing something?
So in Vice President West's update, he provided an update that we did do a industry day back in December. Actually, I think it was right before the holiday. I think it was like December 23rd, remember? Because I didn't get to do any Christmas shopping until Christmasy. That's how bad it was. We worked up to that last day. And I remember, so we had our Industry Partner Day, and it didn't really yield the kind of interest that we would need. So many of the folks that came forward, so if you think of a P3, there has to be, how do I say this the right way? There needs to be a certain amount of revenue that I think is generated in order to make projects physically viable for these developers. And so there was a lot of interest around housing, particularly market value housing. But when you think of a stadium, that really limits revenue generating opportunities. That wasn't, it wasn't quite there. So at this point, we're not saying that P3 can't continue to be explored, but for the stadium component, it creates more challenge. Because as we mentioned, most of the developers that came forward were really interested in kind of the market value housing aspect of the potential of the property to develop on the property because it's a lot. But as you know, we need to get more than just market value housing out of the equation. We need a stadium. We have, you know.
Can we put out an RFP to examine? I mean, Industry Day is great. I'm all for it, but usually there's an RFP put out to gain traction and get those folks who are plausible in this regard and are qualified. Have we done that? Or are we going to do that to gauge the market and the industry rather than a, you know, at-large or broad-based Industry Day?
I'd like to have Dr. West kind of weigh in a little bit on that.
Sure. That was, I think, our intent. I thought if, as we went forward with Industry Day, if partners came forward with that viable model, and I think what Dr. Munoz mentioned is, there was really a lot of vague and not a lot of detail in that Industry Day, where we were expecting folks to come to us with some fully baked ideas, how to partner and use our land and resources. And we did a, we did a strong push out, reaching out beyond, you know, just our folks that we're working with, but well beyond. We did get six people that came, but those ideas that were there really weren't flushed out. And I think the plan for us was to take, if there were some fully flushed out ideas, to then take that out to RFP. Because it didn't yield that in the Industry Day, I don't think that, given where we are with housing, we're going to get that much of a difference. It's just going to further delay. I think that's our concerns, and we believe we've already delayed enough with this project.
I got to tell you, I had no idea about your Industry Day, and this is something that I'm acutely paying attention to and putting it in, like you said, around Christmas time. May have not been the right time. So can we make it more open, transparent, and just not conspicuously opaque, so more people can find out about it, broadly advertise it, so then more than six people can show up?
We can absolutely go the direction that the board wants us to go. I'll tell you that we advertised it heavily, and it advertised for more than four weeks ahead of that day. So while the day actually was in December, we did a strong advertising campaign ahead of that, led multiple weeks in advance so that people could pull information together. We held an onsite meeting and walkthrough for folks to be able to gather information. We walked through spaces. So we feel like we had a really robust marketing push. But if the board's direction is they'd like us to go and do that again, we can absolutely go in that direction.
All right. Any additional questions on that item? Trustee Ente.
We were all supposed to respond to Dr. Munoz about direction. I would just say thank you for the efforts that have been done. I do support exceptionally student housing. I think we should look at every option available. I think looking at the 2024 bond, that we should look at everything that's needed. Our classroom learning spaces, fire academy, cyber security base, we shouldn't just be limited to stadium or a single facility when we look at. It's, you know, I know there were two projects that were already upside down because of the cost of construction, that one was $10 million, another was $20 million. We haven't started in our current bond schedule. And so considering the cost of construction is so much higher now population, even what we planned to do, we can't do, we're not going to do the whole 41 bond schedule. So looking at, you know, what is now unaffordable to do, what is that gap? Also, what is our larger institution need? Of course, including student housing, looking at classroom-based academic space, ELM. So that was at least my personal question. I support moving forward, evaluating, like we did last, you know, we got Fountain and Holley. Look at what's possible, bond attorney, it wasn't just a, you know, fully evaluated eligibility. And I think in the future, too, being in a different fiscal, say, you know, we're very well-liked in the community, say it passes, you know, doing a RFI, request for information of people who are interested in another process, at that point, I bet would deliver a different result or yield of potential applicants. But we say, okay, now we have this much money, this much more money to dedicate versus the limited. Who knows? And two years from now, maybe they, maybe we make it to number one on the list in the state, and then we have some more statement to put into the pot. But I support evaluate.
Thank you, Trustee Ente. And I would add, I think you raised a really valid point. We, if we, and I think we saw this when we were testing the waters last time in August, that if we do move forward, it wouldn't be a bond just for housing and just for vet stadium. It would be comprehensive, right? We know that issues around safety, so we've been wanting to accelerate the timeline for access control, door locks, and things that will make our campus safer. We know those poll very high. Earthquake safety polls high. So things that I think, when we, if we do move in this direction, it wouldn't just be a campaign around housing and housing stadium, but it would be much more comprehensive and really building in what we know resonates with.
Dr. Baxter?
Yes, I agree wholeheartedly with Trustee Ente and with Dr. Munoz. I think that this has a good chance in our community. We are highly regarded. We have a history of working with homeless students, both with basic needs and with our group, and it's always been very positively accepted. And so I think we should further explore this.
I am definitely supportive of this, and I, too, recall that this has been a long time coming. My concern, obviously, echoes what many of you have said regarding the budget, specifically with the tightness that's happening in Sacramento and the rapid rise of inflation. So those two factors really concern me, because it doesn't seem like our state budget is as aggressive in mitigating some of the inflation costs that comes to public institutions, specifically in construction. And our last lobby trip to Sacramento in January was a little frustrating, because we were told everything in person that we wanted to hear, but within, I think it was two weeks, two or three weeks later, we hear it's not going to happen, we don't have the money. So I felt that it was a little, you know, it's frustrating. It's a little disingenuous to have so many higher ed educators there lobbying for funding and being told that it's reasonable and it might and looks good. And then so soon after saying no. I'd rather hear no in my face, and I'd rather be told upfront, it doesn't look good, we don't have it, than have us get our hopes up and start making plans. Anyway, that's all more to do with budget and inflation than us, so, which is out of our control. Are there any additional comments or thoughts on the agenda? All right, that was a.
Vice President Malau.
I'm sorry, Trustee Zia?
I wasn't quick enough.
Sorry.
When are we going to see this come back with an update?
So now that we've, seems like the board has reached a consensus, we'll begin to engage with our consultants that we used back in August to begin to look at creating a timeline. We did have a pre, in the spirit of full transparency, we did have a pre-meeting with them to get a sense of what it would look like, timeline, et cetera. Different decision boards we'd want to bring to the board early, such as, you know, there's some pros and cons for doing the March primary versus. for doing the March primary versus the general election. And so essentially, I would hope that by next leading May, we would be able to come back with, with the groups that we've worked with before to provide the board with more of a detailed timeline and different, what I call decision forks that will need to be made along the way.
Thank you. And Trustee Untuck, second time speaker?
Second and last time. One, I wanted to follow up Dr. Munoz's conversation we had about the board's participation of creating an ad hoc, a part of engagement, the consults like we've done on many other topics. Something for board president to decide. Think that that would be helpful as far as participation and people.
Duly noted. And so our, I know you're our vice president, so I think you have the authority. Do we want to create a board ad hoc committee and then?
Sure. What, thank you, Dr. Munoz. If it is the pleasure of the board, Trustee Chico had to step away from the dais. But if it is the pleasure of the board, I'm happy to entertain the ad hoc committee suggestion. Is, is anyone opposed to that? All right. I will defer to Trustee Chico to make the appointment because she is the chair and she can appoint. If, if there are any trustees, bless you. If there are any trustees who are interested in serving on the ad hoc committee, do say so. And I see Trustee Untuck's hand. Anyone else? Trustee Baxter? Okay. I cannot speak for Trustee Chico and she might want to be on this committee herself. So when she returns, she could certainly make that decision and go from there. Sure. It's his district, his area. I agree. And, and Trustee Chico will have that final say. Did you want to be a third time speaker? Okay. All right. All right. Moving on. Anything else on this item on the agenda? Okay. Moving on the agenda, we're going to section seven. Item 7.1 is an action item. It is a second reading of the ACCJ follow-up report. It was first presented at the March 15th board meeting. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved by Trustee Zia, seconded by Trustee Untuck. Any discussion? Trustee Untuck?
I just want to, again, thank the Academic Senate and our faculty working together for the student learning outcomes, updating all the syllabi in the institution and the new resolution to fully address our, our one item that we had from accreditation. And again, just thankful for everyone's participation and leadership to get that seven-year extension of the accreditation. It's so important for our financial aid, for transferring for our students, for the local control of our institution to have that accreditation. And I'm looking, I don't, I don't think we've got our new certificate yet to hang on the wall. But we, you know, in June, they gave us a thumbs up for seven years. And I just want to say thank you for everyone for closing this out.
That is fantastic. And I think we would be remiss to not acknowledge Dr. Heather Van Volkenberg, who is in the audience.
ALO.
For leading our accreditation efforts. I was, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, if memory serves, I think I was board chair when we started the accreditation. And it feels like seven years ago. So Dr. Van Volkenberg, thank you very much for your wonderful contribution to this seven-year accreditation. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, roll call vote please. And, and excuse me, for the benefit of the public, the information that we are discussing and voting on is on the agenda. You can see it through Board Doc all in all of its binary. Madam Secretary?
Student Trustee Hernandez?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Udoakjo Inta?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
I believe the motion carries with the three votes. We're going to move on to item 7.2 on the agenda, the Everfund Board Self-Evaluation Process. This is a discussion item and information item, and I will do a warm handoff to Dr. Munoz.
Thank you, Vice President Malauulu. So it's that time again a year where we begin to have discussions around the board self-evaluation process. I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a cold, so if I sound a little funny, I apologize. So the couple things, as you know, when I stepped into the role as interim superintendent president, I was given permission to reach out to a consultant. We had worked with Dr. Kindred Murillo, who was a retired superintendent president from Southwestern College in San Diego. And then, as you know, she went on to become interim superintendent president at Santa Barbara City College. So as a board, you had the opportunity to work with Dr. Murillo for two years in a consulting capacity to help us with not only being a facilitator at our board retreat, but to help complete the self-evaluation process, present the summary of the self-evaluation to the board at our summer, summer retreat. And so essentially, and then also she worked alongside Dr. Van Volkenberg and myself to refine the board goals that ultimately came before you were approved in October. So now we're, again, as I mentioned, starting that process again. And so we wanted to kind of seek direction from the board to make sure that, one, do we want to continue working with Dr. Murillo in that consulting capacity? Or option B, do we want to maybe explore working with a different consultant? Or option three even, that there doesn't feel that there's no longer a need for a consultant. We kind of have our training wheels ready to come off and we kind of handle the board retreat, the board self-evaluation and the refinement of the board goals internally. And so I kind of wanted to just, again, open up dialogue with the board to get a sense of the direction that the board would like to go towards as it relates to the board retreat.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. I'd like to open up the floor to any discussion or comments on the item. Trustee Baxter, did I see you?
But, but, Trustee Untuck, that is standing.
But I was looking to the right, so I saw you first. No, go ahead.
I never knew you were right leaning.
Which, which, which one of you? That is very clever.
Okay. Now, I mean, of course, I've already said I'm going to kill this fan, so I better watch what I say about myself. But I, I think we can do the self-evaluation. I don't know. I don't know if Trustee Untuck agrees with me. I think we have a much different, what do I want to say, atmosphere? That's not the right word, but collegial. But that's, that's my recent.
I was going to say, I, thank you. I really enjoyed working with Kindred Morella. And, you know, she's, I don't know if she's available now. She's been, still is interim at Santa Barbara. I thought it was good. I didn't necessarily think of it as, as sure, I think we're always genial here at the board, that it would be good for maybe one more year. And then maybe with the goal of, this is the, this is the last year to help transition. I would say if she wasn't available, then I'd say, yeah, let's see who else is out there. Cause I, I've talked to other boards who have, the former chancellors come in do it. There's, there's so many different people out there that, of course, a, a new fresh set of eyes may give us some additional perspective. But I'm, I'm open to whatever my colleagues agree to.
I will opine. I am against us evaluating ourselves because we will give ourselves A pluses all across the board and it's just not going to be a good thing. I, I am 50/50 though on having Dr. Murillo do it again. I could see the benefit of that because she does have a history and she's seen it. So she can come back a year later with that perspective. But I also like having a new person do the board evaluation, fresh set of eyes, completely open-minded. However, I'm not stuck to either one of those. If, if the majority of the board chooses Dr. Murillo, great. If the majority of the board chooses a new person, great. Doesn't matter to me either way. The only thing is, is I'm against us doing it ourselves. All right. Any additional discussion? Dr. Munoz?
Thank you. So I want to summarize. So what I'm feeling I'm hearing is yes, there is support to continue with a facilitator. And yes, there's support to continue with Dr. Murillo. The second item that we want to seek direction on is format for the retreat. As you know, last year, last summer, we broke the, we found, it was a little bit challenging to schedule the retreat. And so what we ended up doing is we broke it into a two-day format. So as you remember, we did kind of two four-hour meetings instead of trying to find a full day on a Friday when the campus is closed or a full day on the Saturday. We did two back-to-back evenings that allowed us to essentially get through all the retreat items, but in that format. So I wanted to check in so that Michelle has direction as she begins to try to schedule the retreat. Is there support? Did that format work for you all? Did you feel that was a good format? So do we want to maintain the two-part board retreat back-to-back evenings? Or would you, does the board prefer us exploring a date, like a full one-day, seven, eight-hour retreat? So I'll kind of pause there and see what the temperature in the room is.
All right. I'd like to open up the floor.
Yeah, I like the.
Let me, let me look left this time. Did you have an opinion? Okay. All right. Now I'm going back to the right. Go ahead, Dr. Baxter.
I like, I like the two half-days because one whole day, I mean, that's really exhausting. It's, it's funny. It's, I think it's more exhausting to sit for eight hours than it would be to run around, do stuff. So I am the one who is quasi-retired. So, you know, I don't know how the rest of you. I think we get more two, two half.
Trustee Zia?
I, I apologize. I had to step out, but I, from what I infer from the discussion that we're examining either one full day for the retreat or two half-days. I'm okay either way. It just means I'll have to take two days off from work. So whatever is the desire of the majority of the board, I'll, I'll defer to the majority of the board.
Trustee Untuck, you want to?
Yeah, I, I thought the, the two-day split was, was good, especially we were kind of post-pandemic, uncertain of the restrictions at the time. But, but now we're, we're back. You know, I, I'm not opposed to an all-day or three-fourths of the day. That, that somewhere in the district, maybe we go to Catalina for the day. Make the team building. I saw recently the city council went to the state and did a free team build day. So it might be something for us now that we're relatively post-pandemic. Maybe we go to Lakewood Civic Center for the day.
You know, it's my area.
Yeah, come the, come the, to your area, you know. So I'm, I'm open to either one, but just look forward to positive results.
I have had some experiences with retreats, board retreats outside of LBCC in the last couple of years with an ACCT board retreat and a Naleo board retreat. And they really are retreats. With ACCT, we were in Branson, Missouri for a very exhausting weekend where we went 10 hours each day and it was great. I mean, you know, you really put yourself through the fire, but you come out with that glow if you're not charred. So I'm not opposed. The Naleo retreat also is an away retreat and I'm not opposed. I like the idea of Catalina. That sounds great. If it's a hardship, you know, perhaps we can do like an overnight and, and plan events. But I realize that for us, because of the Brown Act and because of staff, I realize that that is an issue. Again, I'm indifferent if we go all day or two days or break it up. But I am sensitive to schedules and families and work obligations. Sometimes the public doesn't realize that LBCC is not our employment and we do have full-time jobs and we do have families. So we do have to be cognizant of that. So if, you know, whatever the board secretary and Dr. Munoz come up with, maybe give us some, some options and we can vote on that.
What I, and thank you for the feedback. This is exactly what we were hoping to obtain. I think from my perspective, just as an observation from last year's retreat, I actually was surprised how well I felt the two-night back-to-back format worked. I felt like we were able to retain information. Things happen over eight hours. There's kind of like the afternoon slump, right? Felt like the engagement was pretty and was, it was just really, I thought, very engaging throughout both sessions. And I think so, so the direction's helpful. I think we'll explore a couple of options. And then I think the last question we're hoping to see feedback on is, I know we did it a little late last year. We did it in August. So just get a sense, do you prefer the August timing or July? Our, our actual administrative procedure, I believe, doesn't, it just says it happens annually, it happens in the summer, it doesn't happen in a month. So did August work closer to the start of the school year for you all? Or do you, would you prefer to have something more in July? Where it's close, if there's any thoughts on?
Go ahead, Trustee Zia.
I'm okay with end of August, like last week of August. Just my two cents. I can make July work as well, but I think towards the end of August, around August 3rd, 29th, 30th or so would be great.
I, go ahead, Trustee Baxter.
I was just saying, that would be good. I have a trip to Croatia during July 6th to the 20th, something. So, and then another trip August 4th. So toward the end of August would be fine with me.
I, I think the end of August might be a hardship for staff because of College Day. Because staff is working and every year they raise the bar higher, which means they have to work harder to make sure we have a better, more robust College Day. So I'm leaning toward maybe the, the middle, you know, forward before College Day so they can get their retreat out of the way and then they could focus on College Day.
What day is?
It's usually the last Friday of August, right before the, the new academic year.
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but we, you know, and, and like I said, we don't have to pick a date in this moment. Michelle will pull the board and find a couple date options. But just so that as she's crafting the dates, we know we're pretty much going to be looking in August and go. This helps so that there's less back and forth.
Yeah, as long as it's after August 25th for me, it's fine.
I was going to say the first few weeks off. For me, the week of the 21st through 25th, I'll be down. Same thing at the end of July, I'll be up.
So late August is a little problematic for us only because the start of the semester, we typically try to have that retreat not back up against the start of the school year because as you mentioned, we're all in the throngs of opening the campus. So we'll look at some dates. We'll take in consideration some of the blackout dates that have been given. But as you know, it is always challenging to find something that works for everybody, but we'll do our best. So thank you. I appreciate the feedback. I feel like we, just to summarize so that we're all on the same page, the direction that's been given is that we will continue with a facilitator. So I will reach out to Kindred Murillo, as well as we will explore retreat sometime in the month of August with a two-part format. Thank you.
That's funny because I didn't hear that. I heard Paris for the whole month of August. Everybody, all the administration, all the faculty, that's what I heard, but okay.
I, I heard the same thing. Maybe we can also look at July.
Right. No, no, I was joking. We're not going to Paris.
I thought I just heard Dr. Baxter say she's in Croatia during the 4th through the 20th.
Okay, yeah. If maybe we can do a doodle pool if it's not.
Right. And that'll be the next step is, is we'll do the doodle pool. Thank you. Any additional discussion on this item?
Nope. Thank you very much.
All right. So we're going to move on to section eight on the agenda. This is the consent agenda. Any item can be removed from the consent agenda if there are any board members who would like to withhold or hold out any item on the agenda. Seeing none, we're going to move to item 8.2, which is approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have Trustee Zia with the motion, Trustee Baxter with the second. Any discussion on that?
Trustee Untuck?
I'm going to abstain from participation. I don't have a personal financial interest, but.
Is it on the entire consent agenda of Trustee Untuck or one item?
It's one item. Vote all.
Well, you can hold the one item out if you'd like to. All right. Okay. Recognizing Trustee Untuck's decision to abstain from voting on the entire agenda, we do have three remaining trustees and that would carry the vote. Madam Secretary, if you could please call roll, roll call vote.
Student Trustee Hernandez?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico, absent from vote. Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Udoakjo Inta, abstained. And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And now we are going to. And now we are going to, so, Madam Secretary, on the agenda that I'm using, item 8.3 is not highlighted, so I'm assuming I can go ahead and skip that and go down to nine?
You can skip now all the way to section nine, which is page 21. I didn't mark probably your book for that.
Got it, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to section nine on the agenda, which is human resources. 9.1 is the certificated hourly instructor supplement to initial bargaining proposal to the district. It is a full contract renewal. This is an information item only. I will do a warm handoff to Vice President Nashua. Is that who will be leading this? Or Dr. Munoz, maybe?
So typically what happens with 9.1 is the highlighted sections are just read out out loud because we're sunshining, so we can read that. Or if you want to read it, it's up to you, I'll defer to you.
I will be happy to read it. Bear in mind that President Chico has stepped away from the dais, so I'm working on a different agenda that's not annotated.
Thank you.
And a tad bit rusty, not too rusty, but you know, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm getting back into it. All right, so nine, again, 9.1 is an information item only. I'm going to read some information to you all. California Government Code Section 3547 requires that all initial proposals of exclusive representatives in the district shall be presented at a public meeting of the Board of Trustees. The current master agreement between the Long Beach Community College District and certificated hourly, it says certify, but I believe it's certificated. Hourly instructors, Long Beach City College, CHI, LVCC terminates on June 30th, 2023. Accordingly, CHI proposes additional items to reopen negotiations on a successor agreement with CHI LVCC on the following. And there are two articles highlighted. One is recognition. Improve language around recognition and representation of recently retired, full-time and hourly faculty. Update the current contract language accordingly. Article eight, assignment rights and reemployment. And then there is some language. Establish a disciplinary procedures article. Negotiate a disciplinary procedures article to establish just cause discipline and due process. And then there's establish an office hours article. Negotiate an office hours article to establish a minimum amount of paid office hours. In accordance with Administrative Regulation 2003.3, the public shall be given no less than 14 calendar days to review the proposal. As a result, the hearing provided the public the opportunity to express itself. On CHI's supplement to initial bargaining proposal will be held at the Board of Trustees' meeting May 24th, 2023, at which time it will appear on the agenda for proposed adoption by the board. Any discussion on that item? All right, we will move to item 9.2 on the agenda, which is employment contract. This is an, an action item. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the employment contracts as submitted. The following employment contracts provide employees with a term of employment, an annual salary along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. There are three contracts up for approval today. The first one is for Anthony Pagan, interim dean, applied technology and culinary arts. The term, July 1st, 2023, December 31st, 2023. The salary, $177,673. The second is Janay Hunn, interim dean, visual performing arts and cultural programs. The term is July 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, at the salary of $167,475. And the last is Melissa Infascino, interim vice president, economic workforce development and government affairs. The term is July 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, at the rate of $223,592. I do need a motion and a second to approve these contracts.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Trustee Untuck, a second from Trustee Zia. Any discussion on that?
Yes, I have a question. Because I know that Janay Hunn has a doctorate, why is first salary $10,000 less than Mr.? Is that allowed to ask?
I, I, I don't know if you're allowed to ask, but you just did. So Vice President-
He can refuse to answer.
Lloyd Nashua.
So the doctoral degree has separate stipend on its own, it's not reflected in the contract. And this is, uh, it, it, it's based on the different factors, your experience in a role, et cetera, et cetera. And so not, no two apples. And so that's why.
So when you place an administrator on salary, if you, um, so sometimes you'll see discrepancy, not discrepancies, but you'll see a, a difference in one administrator getting a higher placement than another. Oftentimes it goes back to years of service. So obviously we're not going to unpack Dr. Hunn's service with everyone, but just zooming out and not talking about the specifically, but just in general. If you come to a management position and this is your first administrator job, then you're typically placed lower on the sk, on the, on the step and range versus someone who might have had a prior administrative role. And so they're negotiating an increase because they have that negotiating power because maybe they've been serving as administrator for three or four years in another role.
It just, I, I, I vaguely remember that this happened, that two deans were the same. And I questioned, well, this person has more longevity, more, and you know, it was like, we, we have to keep people the same. That's, that's why I'm asking. And I don't want to get into people. And I bet you can guess who I'm talking about.
Okay, all right.
I, I have a question as well, Vice President Malauulu. Am I mistaken that this is the second year we're doing interim deans? Or is this, and is that correct? And then if so, why are we not advertising for the permanent position? I think these three individuals are highly qualified. And I just want to better understand the process in which it was followed and what is the plan for a permanent, for a permanent dean and vice president position?
Thank you. So it's a good question. So one of the things you noticed that this term of these contracts is not for a full school year, it's for one semester. So the intent is to, well, let me back up. When, as you noticed, these three positions were new positions. So when they were presented at President's Leadership Council, and I proposed that we create the two dean positions, one for visual performing arts and cultural programs and the other for applied technology and culinary arts. At the same time, I also recommended that we would reintroduce the vice president of workforce economic development. The agreement that I made with the President's Leadership Council, not that necessarily I needed their approval, but we do things in a collegial way here, is as we had robust discussions about these three positions, the commitment that I communicated to them is that we would have these positions for a full academic year and then do an assessment about how effective the positions were and then make a determination at that point. And so we actually did consider posting these positions this spring. And I was reminded by, by my wonderful colleagues at President's Leadership Council say, hey, hey, wait, Dr. Munoz, you actually said that we were going to go a whole academic year with this before you make a decision whether or not to continue with these positions long-term. And, and so I said, yes, you're correct. I did say we would go a year. And so there was no, if we would have opened the position, obviously this spring, it would have only been like one semester in these positions. And that was kind of the discussion agreement we had at PLC. So in honoring the spirit of that, we decided to postpone these positions. We're going to continue, obviously, with the interims for fall. And then at the end of the school year, I will do my full assessment of the three administrative positions, probably have some commerce, another conversation with PLC, hopefully gain their support to continue with these positions and then make the full recommendation for the fall.
I see, I really appreciate you elucidating that. And for, this is a point of clarification and information. First of all, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be proud to vote yes on this item. Second, it may be more clear to show that the salaries are not for the term because it appears to be like they're getting double what it's being in the contract, unless you go into the contract, for example. It's annual, it's not for that period of six months. So it's a little more clear for the public that we're not doing this, we're not doubling for the whole year.
That is a great point. And just as a point of clarification, because the contracts are attached, it's a monthly 12, you know, it's a salary broken up across 12 months. So, but thank you for pointing that out. And I do think that's a really good recommendation so that maybe we do an asterisk that notes, you know, some kind of footnote that notes what you just referenced.
And I think they well deserve this pay and I'll gladly vote for it.
I, I agree with Trustee Zia's observation and I was thinking the same thing, that the salary should actually be reflective of the term that's listed on there because the salary obviously is for a one-year basis, but that term is only six months. So it would make a difference, especially to the public viewing the, the attachments and the agenda. Any additional discussion? All right, and I am also supportive of this. Madam Secretary, if you can take a roll call vote, please.
Student Trustee exempt from this item. Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Perlinda Chico absent. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Uduwakjo Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Moving on to section 10 on the agenda, Academic Senate. Item 10.1 is new, modified and inactivated courses. This is an action item, I do need a motion second. That the Board of Trustees approve the new, modified and inactivated courses effective fall 2024 as submitted. Trustee Zia with a motion.
Second.
Trustee Untuck with the second, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Student Trustee Hernandez.
Aye.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Perlinda Chico absent. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Uduwakjo Intuck. Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries, item 10.2 on the agenda, new, modified and inactivated programs, another action item. I need a motion and a second. That the Board of Trustees approve the new, modified and inactivated programs effective fall 2024 as submitted. For the benefit of the public, you will note that there are different course items and different subjects. That's why they were separated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Baxter, any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Student Trustee Hernandez.
Aye.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Perlinda Chico absent. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Uduwakjo Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section 11 on the agenda, Academic Affairs. Item 11.1, new and/or revised board policy and administrative procedure. Chapter four, Academic Affairs, Board Policy 4004 inactivation, 4230, 4240, 4250, first reading. Administrative Procedure 4004 inactivation and Administrative Procedure 4230, 4240, 4250, 4255 informational. This is a first reading information only. Board Policy 4004, Child Development Center, childcare inactivation. Academic Procedure 4004, Child Development Center, childcare inactivation. Board Policy 4230, grading and academic record symbols revised. First reading replaces Board Policy 4021. Administrative Procedure 4230, grading and academic record symbols. Board Policy 4240, academic renewal. Administrative Procedure 4240, academic renewal. Board Policy 4250, probation dismissal and readmission. Administrative Procedure 4250, probation. Administrative procedure, administrative procedure 4255, dismissal and readmission. For the benefit of the public, all of these items are attached on board doc and you could read them at your leisure. Moving on the agenda to section 12. Administrative and Business Services, item 12.1, Events and Film Services Executive Summary. This is an information item only. There is an executive summary attached regarding events and film services. Item 12.2, new and/or revised board policy and administrative procedures, chapter six. Administrative and Business Service, Board Policy 6700, first reading review only. And Administrative Procedure 6700 informational. Again, first reading information. Board Policy 6700, Civic Center and Other Facilities Use. Administrative Procedure 6700, Civic Center and Other Facilities Use. And that was all for information and those items are attached for the benefit of the public. Moving on to section 13 on the agenda, Student Services. Item 13.1, annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation for board meetings. This is an action item, I do need a motion and a second. That the Board of Trustees approve compensation for the student trustee as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second, but I'm going to finish reading what I have to read. Annually, the Board of Trustees shall consider whether the student trustee shall continue to receive compensation as outlined in California Education Code, Section 72024, District Board Policy 2027. Policy on Board Member Compensation and District Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 2005. Policy on Student Member of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Zia made the motion. I did hear Trustee Baxter with the second first.
I heard.
Well then, Trustee Untuck with the second. I, I did hear you, Trustee Baxter. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
Are you making them?
I, I would like to offer a comment. We have a wonderful student trustee right now. He's amazing, but you know what? We've had wonderful student trustees in the past as well. Since I've been on the board, we've been blessed with some very active student trustees who dedicate their time, time away from their family, time away from their studies. They rearrange their schedule. Alex, I, I hope you don't mind that I'm going to say that he lives far away. I believe in the Antelope Valley. And yet he attends all of our board meetings and so many of our community events. And just this morning, we were at the White House event and they discussed compensation for interns and how the White House really has made an effort to do that. And I feel that the district should get in line and also compensate our students, especially when they really do go above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you very much. We do have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary?
Student Trustee Hernandez.
Abstain.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Perlinda Chico absent. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Uduwakjo Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13.2 on the agenda, revised administrative procedure, chapter five, Student Services. Administrative Procedure 5505, this is an informational item only. In accordance with established practice, the following administrative procedure has been reviewed by the President's Leadership Council and is presented for information. This is Administrative Policy 5055, Enrollment Priorities. Moving on to section 14 on the agenda, 14, this is reports. 14.1 is Board of Trustees' Report. Do we have any volunteers to do your Board of Trustees' Report? Trustee Baxter, take it away.
Okay, Dario, are you ready? Cause they're going to cut me off. So I, I, poor Dario, I sent him a bunch of pictures like, and I'll get in trouble by saying this. Okay, first I attended and thanks to President Chico, I gave the opening remarks to the Ethnic Studies Summit, which was last Friday. This was so fantastic. I, I said to, to Frank Perez, I wish everybody could have been here to hear this. And so go on to the next one, yeah. This is Dr. Sean Arsay, who was the keynote speaker, and he was fantastic. He kept it moving. He asked people to talk between themselves and then come back together. And I was just really, really pleased and fortunate to be there. Okay, next one. Then I went to a rotary presentation by MHP Structural Engineers and they were the engineers on the M building. And he talked about earthquakes. the M building, and he talked about earthquakes and the good news and the bad news. Alex, if you go to Berkeley, they're, they're in a very ripe earthquake park. The good news is Long Beach is not, even though we have the New Hall Fault and all these different faults, we are not sitting on a really serious fault. It's more Riverside, so don't move to Riverside, that, that, that area. But anyway, wonderful presentation, but you could see the, oh, I shouldn't, now I'm going to get in trouble with Dr. West and everybody else living in the Moreno Valley. Okay, anyway, it was a wonderful presentation. We had a AAUW Long Beach meeting at which Renee Roberts spoke. She was born with cerebral palsy, became a dragon boat racer, and it was an uplifting, wonderful program. And then during Ramadan, we had two Afghan refugee ladies who made lunch for us, and what was so, there was fabulous food, and they couldn't eat it because it was during Ramadan, but they volunteered to come and serve the meal, and we had 20 people stay for lunch, and it was fantastic. Okay, next. Oh, I drove out to Palm Desert, I didn't drive out, my husband drove out to Palm Desert, where I spoke to the Palm Desert Rotary, and I just thought, look, we live, we live in paradise. We really do. Look at the mountains and the palm trees and all that kind of stuff. So, and it was fun to talk to another Rotary group. And by the way, I'm speaking at the Long Beach Rotary on May 17th, if anyone is so interested in listening, my first ladies. Okay, next one. I wanted to highlight Brian Russell, who won Rotarian of the Month. He's an alum, he's on the foundation board, he happens to be president of our homeless group, so there he is getting his award. He was dressed as the Easter Bunny for an Easter Bunny thing at Teddy Oak Park. Yeah, and luckily he took off the headpiece. Okay, next one. Oh, this is, this is where I was at the last meeting in Ireland, and Herlinda's mother is next to me, and she was on the trip, and I just wanted to report that I, I was there, but I was in the lobby of the hotel on the Zoom meeting, not that night, but a different night. But there's my, there was my group. Okay, next. Oh, this is today. This is Lucius Martin. Lucius Martin is a graduate of Long Beach City College, happened to be a student of mine just a few years ago, and he is the first appointee as Deputy Mayor of Economic Development, and I think it's wonderful that we have an LBCC connection. And I watched him grow from going to City College, then he went to UCLA, then he went to work at the city, and he's just risen up through the ranks in the city. So I was congratulating him this morning at the wonderful, wonderful cybersecurity presentation we had. Do I have one more? Yeah. And then I was asked to give a talk, the history of dance at LBCC, which I had a lot of fun researching, looking at the history book and all that kind of stuff. And so this was before the performance on Friday night, and I want to salute the dance department, Stephanie Powell and Martha, whose name I'm going to butcher, peremptor, and what a wonderful job. We should be so proud of our dance students. They are just absolutely fantastic. And is that the last one? Okay, then I'm going to hit the others. Oh, I got 15 seconds. Okay. I went to the, I'm going to say the Cesar Chavez meeting, which was in the social justice area, and the featured Cesar Chavez, and I'm old enough to be part of the great boycott, don't cut me off. Anyway, I'm looking at Vice President Malauulu. It was a wonderful, wonderful presentation to our students. It was unfortunate that not that many of our students were there, but, but I enjoyed it very much, and it was very well done. And I guess, oh, I want to adjourn the meeting in memory of Jana Woodward. Jana was the administration, administrative person at the Child Development Center at LAC. She was an angel, and now she is an angel, and just a wonderful, wonderful person. Everybody loved her. She was friendly, outgoing, did a super job running the Child Development Center at LAC. So I'm going to hand this to you as we adjourn, and thank you. And next time I'll hit all the other things.
Thank you, trustee Baxter. When I'm chairing the meeting, I, I do extend a little bit of grace, as long as you're saying something positive and educational and funny. Otherwise, I say, cut it off. Trustee Untuck.
Yeah, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to our LBCC team to help put on today's event with the White House National Cyber Security Director, Kimba Walden. It was, the advance team reached out about two weeks ago to say, hey, the White House would like to do a rollout of the new national cybersecurity policy at Long Beach City College. Can you guys do that? I was like, yes, we can. And, you know, feeding it up to Dr. Munoz, and just want to thank Carl Kim, Stacy Toda, Rome, whole team, Brad, Crutchfield, the videography and photos. This is, on March 3rd, the White House rolled out the new 2023 national cybersecurity policy that has five pillars, and pillar four in particular is around cybersecurity workforce development, integrating cybersecurity into all areas of STEM, but also the, the national deficit of cybersecurity personnel, and one of the work with community colleges specifically, and we've had a great working relationship with the White House over the years about placing people in jobs now. You don't have to wait two years or four years to get a certificate. We had our cybersecurity students there, professors, community members, support, aerospace, Space Beach Relativity was there, and just highlighting Long Beach's role. NASA BPL was there as well. It just was a great opportunity to bring community members and students, professors, you know, and be able to highlight that policy, that there's jobs starting at $40 an hour without a bachelor's degree. And it's, that's the training that we offer at campus, and it was a national need. Really, the part of it was some of the security clearance that needed. You have to be a citizen, you need to be a domestic student, and so it's really focused on how do we fill the pipeline sooner. Community college is a key partner in that. So I just want to thank our team, and also thank Director Walden and her team, the Office of Cybersecurity Director was here today. Also, I was selected, or next month, I'll be doing my best Jenny Baxter impersonation. I was selected to represent California on a housing policy tour, so I'm going to Vienna, Austria. Never been to Central Europe. So there's a delegation of about 40 of us that are going. I'm the community college housing person on the trip, and we're going to go for, for 10 days and learn about Vienna's strategy. They went from worst to best in EU in housing affordability. What are the strategies? So we're going to go on tours, meet with legislators, planning department, architects, and so forth. And so looking forward to do a report back to the board and to our campus community, strategies, what is the EU doing for affordable housing in general? So there's, there's the two delegations going, two weeks, two 10-day weeks, and so I'm going to Southern California, LA delegation in week one. Like, it's also, I, I know there's a getaway company that does trips. I gotta, can't remember the name, but.
I have a book I can show you.
So, and then also, I was selected by the National Renewable Energy Lab as 2023 Energy Executive, and will be traveling to Boulder, Colorado, for the next four months for a couple of trainings. So additional technology and renewable energy information that I'll be bringing back to the campus and connecting with our STEM programs. So a couple of nice things that are coming on the horizon that happened this past month. So concludes my report.
Congratulations, trustee Zia.
Thank you. I am going to need the five minutes, not just the one minute. So just dovetailing on what trustee Baxter's already mentioned, but on March 24th, I went to the Hall of Champions. Now, the Superintendent President also talked about it. What an amazing night. What, so much heart, so much love, and it was a pleasure being there all the way to the end. And on April 1st, as trustee Baxter mentioned, as the co-president of AAUW, I had the distinct pleasure of hosting an amazing speaker that trustee Baxter, Dr. Baxter, was able to bring to the crowd, and it was really illuminating hearing about just the, the inspiration of what one person can do to overcome adversity, especially with a disability, and made me think about looking, taking a closer look and examining how our students who are dealing with disabilities are doing with access. So thank you, Dr. Baxter, for that. The same night, I have been helping and been on the board of a refugee assistance organization, TIA Foundation, who helps members from conflict areas, conflict zones like Afghanistan, Iraq, Ethiopia, Somalia, Venezuela, and Syria, and they celebrated a 10-year anniversary, and it was lovely. If you ever get a chance, check out Flavors from Afar. The founder is a good friend and was nominated in the top 10 CNN heroes in the, in the country. And every weekend, every week, they have, they host Flavors from different parts of the refugee countries that they support, like Afghanistan, Iran, Syria, Iraq. It's, it's a lovely group. And then on April 20th, I, we had the building M ribbon cutting was lovely, and on the 21st, I had the great pleasure of seeing the dance performance that was led by our students and our amazing faculty, Dr. Powell, I believe it's Dr. Powell, if I'm not mistaken, but if she's not, I just made her a doctor. But it was just brilliant. It was beautiful, so much heart, so much beauty. I was particularly proud to see our students from all walks of life, just so much love and expression, their families. The duet was amazing. That was one of my favorite parts. It opened up with my favorite song from Eminem, and, and that was really lovely. There's a lot you don't know about me. The belly dancing was amazing. Oh, my goodness. I was just about to get up and just, you know, get into it. And last but not least, of course, Dr. Munoz, it was so nice to see you there. I loved your attire. I love how you gave it some gusto by being there, gave it a little bit more, you know, visibility, so more people came, and hopefully it really was helpful. And then I hate to end on such a sad note, but the world lost a very special person to the city, David Sumo White. He was a pillar in our community, was a manager at redevelopment agency, and his imprint is everywhere in the city. He was just an amazing human being, was a sudden loss for us, for the city, and a lot of folks that were close to him, like myself. David just was a consummate advocate for civil rights, always trying to do more about race relations, and we had a very close relationship, so does many in the city, including our very own Carl, I believe. And we shared a favorite poem by Gil Scott-Heron, and that's "The Television Will Not Be Televised." And it is one of the most incredible poetries, it's in the poems in the Library of Congress. I won't get into it. It's quite a poem. If you get a chance, check it out, and it's very illuminating. And I would appreciate if we can also adjourn in his honor, and just, he is in the eternal, immortal minds of a lot of us in the celestial divinity. And if we can, I'd appreciate it. David Sumo White, you will be missed. Thank you, Vice President. Malauulu, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move on. Oh, actually, my report. Oh, sorry. I was going to skip myself. Okay, so it, it does feel like a long time since our last board meeting, because we met a week earlier than we should have in March. So since our last board meeting on Friday, March 17th, I took my two sons to the theatrical production of She Kills Monsters. It was fantastic. I mean, just incredible production, quick, fast-moving. My nephew, Ricky Teeterman, was actually, I'm sorry, Roman Teeterman, was actually played the role, dual role of Orcus and Ronnie. Dario, will you show the photograph of this is the whole cast? And my nephew is the one in the middle with the red pants. But everybody, gosh, I, I wish you could have all gone to see that. My boys loved it, and it was based on the 1980s phenom Dungeons and Dragons. But the way it was adapted was just, kudos to Tony Carrero in the theater department. It was fantastic. On Saturday, the 18th, I attended, along with trustee Chico, the Latinas in Action Annual Women's Empowerment Conference. This year, it was El Despertar de la Mujer Latina en la Economía, which was the awakening of the Latina woman in the economy. And Dario, the next photograph, please. So you've got trustee Chico, you've got me, you've got Marta Cota, who is the Executive Director of Latinos in Action. She runs a wonderful nonprofit here in Long Beach, and then that's my mama there on the left. And after that event, we jetted to Senator Lena Gonzalez's Women's History Month brunch. So that was a great event, and we got to see a lot of people from throughout Senate District 33. On Tuesday, the 21st, I attended the Women in Labor Event at the Pacific Coast Campus. Dario, you want to show that slide? So once again, I'm so grateful for Dr. Frank Perez, for the work that he does, not just with the Labor Center, but the Ethnic Studies Program, and I was really sorry to miss this year's Ethnic Studies Summit. I, I went to one and two, and I couldn't make this one. But this event was great, and I look forward to having it grow. These are the women that were on the panel. Just really grateful for that. On March 23rd, and I'll report on this later, but I attended the Audit Subcommittee Meeting, and I was at the Special Olympics grand opening that evening, Friday, the 24th, the Hall of Champions Event, another great event by the foundation, and just huge, huge kudos to the foundation for these great annual events that are just kind of staples within the community. And then on Tuesday, or Thursday, can't read my own writing, March 30th, it's Thursday, the Cesar Chavez Celebration, once again. I appreciate the opportunity to attend that. On Saturday, the 1st, I was at the, and I don't know how to pronounce it, I'm sorry, but the San Crista New Year Event? Okay, I was at that event. Congratulations to Councilwoman Sullisato and all of the community partners that joined together to make that event happen. I am so happy that that event happens at the Pacific Coast Campus and that we're able to open up that campus to the community. Good job, everybody. On Friday, the 7th, I was at the Good Friday Breakfast. Wednesday, the 12th, the DEI Month, opening at, the DEIA Month, opening the Diversity Equity Inclusion Awareness Month at the Pacific Coast Campus. Again, another event. I really love how we're using that space, that driveway in front of the GG Building. It's been used several times. Just whoever came up with that idea, you deserve a pat on the back. I love that. Thursday, the 13th, I had to attend an ACCT Pacific Region Meeting with other trustees from our region. And by the way, there are other meetings that I have to attend throughout. I'm on the Audit and Finance Committee there, and also Naleo, some executive meetings. On Sunday, the 16th, I was at the Grand Prix. Dario, next slide, please. So there we've got Professor Skinner, trustee Chico, Vice President Dr. Douglas, and I regret that I didn't take a picture of what I really should have taken a picture of, which was the Long Beach City College Career Technical Education Display inside the Convention Center, which if you missed it, you missed a really amazing thing. And I was, I was kind of hoping Dr. Munoz would include that in his report, because we had a, I mean, you know, location, location, location. We had a corner unit with high traffic, high visibility at the Convention Center. We had our LBCC Tesla, this LBCC van. We had all this information of running video TVs, and it was all, people were like, this is Long Beach City College. They were agog, looking at all these displays. They were agog, looking at all these displays. So we need to do that again, and we need to make sure we have a similar location because it was just fantastic. And I was so proud. You would have been proud too. I was wearing LBCC stuff, you would have been proud. All right, on the Thursday, the 20th, I was at the LBCC Foundation Board of Governors Meeting, the annual bimonthly meeting. And then we jetted over to the Building M ribbon cutting. Yesterday, I attended the ASU doctoral cohort online. And today, I was at the cybersecurity event where we hosted the White House and all those other great people. Now, I mentioned when I gave the flag salute today that I'm wearing jeans to the board meeting in honor and recognition of Denim Day. Once again, this is to raise awareness. When I was teaching here, I taught journalism, and I assigned my students an assignment to go out and to talk about events like this. And many of them were published in our Viking News. This raises awareness for sexual abuse, sexual assault of women and girls. So, you know, remember to wear your denim on Denim Day. And I would just like to make an announcement to the public that I will not be attending the May 24th meeting. My youngest son is graduating from eighth grade that day. And four years ago, when my oldest son graduated from eighth grade, I came to the meeting, left early, went to the graduation, had a lift waiting for me, dropped me off at the church where he graduated, came back to the meeting, and it was just too stressful. And then I was listening to the meeting in my earphone, and I just want to be present for my son, and I want to be present for my family. And I've never missed a board meeting, but I'm making a decision to really be present and watch my youngest son graduate from eighth grade. Um, and that's it for my report. And the last thing that I want to say before we move on to 14-2, and I recognized her earlier, but today is Administrative Professional Day. So even though Michelle Reese is the Board Secretary, and she does a fantastic job, she also does a lot of other things interfacing with other admin professionals on campus. So I would like to acknowledge them as well. It is not easy working for five very, very busy trustees. And Michelle goes above and beyond all the time, working calendars, working events, making sure we all get the information we need, attachments, maps, directions, what time you got to be there. So I really appreciate you personally, but I know on behalf of the board, we all appreciate you as well. And to everybody on campus, everybody at LAC, everybody at PCC, everybody associated with the district, if you are an admin professional, we see you, we hear you, we acknowledge you. Thank you very much for your commitment to serve our students and our community. So we appreciate you. All right, moving on to 14.2, Board Committee Reports. The only board committee I'm aware of is the Board Subcommittee that I attended, the Audit Subcommittee. And that was on March 23rd. And basically, what we did is we reviewed last year's audit. We discussed plans for this year, and we started the preparation for, laid the groundwork for this year. We're going to continue to use the same company. And that is a public meeting per the Brown Act, so anybody is welcome to attend. And we do go through line item, budget items as necessary. Any other board reports?
If I can just say, Trustee Intuck and I were supposed to marry, meet, that too. Uh, meet on Friday, and he indulged me with postponing our meeting. I am responsible now for an LBCC retiree who is going through a very difficult situation. And I've become his trustee and his medical, whatever you call that. And so thank you for.
Advanced Directive.
Advanced Directive, thank you. But we will meet, I promise, someday.
All right, sounds good, sounds good. Thank you. And if there aren't any other Board Subcommittee Reports, then I'm going to go to Section 15 on the agenda, which is Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. We do not have a non-agenda item public comment. However, we are going to make a slight adjustment to the agenda and go back to agenda items because one of our guests here, there was a mix-up with the note card. So Suzanne Engelhardt, President of LBCCFA, is going to speak on Item 15.1. And apologies to any parliamentarians who see that I've, you know, completely taken some liberty here with the agenda. Go ahead, Suzanne.
And I thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. And again, I apologize to our VNADN for dropping the ball on that. So I will, with no, I will move forward with this. Um, I am reading this letter on behalf of the VN and ADN Program Faculty Members, whom a majority stayed to hear this tonight and represent. Dear President Chico, Vice President Malauulu, Trustee Intuck, Trustee Zia, Trustee Baxter, and Student Trustee Hernandez, we as the Long Beach City College Nursing Faculty would like to ask for your support. We work tirelessly to make sure our nursing students have strong clinical and classroom experiences. Our goal as nurses is to help build strong nurses of the future for our community. But this takes time. We have been forced to work off schedule and off contract year after year to prepare them for clinical. This means working with our clinical partners and meeting the requirements they have set forth to allow our students to participate in their facilities. We have requirements set forth by our accrediting agencies that we also have to maintain. We are left with no choice but to meet the demands of the accrediting agency and the demands of our clinical partners. The demand and requirements have become increasingly more consuming and difficult over the years. To get the students and faculty reading for clinical, it often takes weeks of our summer and winter breaks. This is all unpaid time. As nurses, we are also required to maintain our own licensure and healthcare requirements to be allowed to take our students to the hospital and clinical settings. This is also time-consuming and unpaid. We are simply asking to get paid for the work we have doing, we have been doing by supporting us in transitioning to a 197-day schedule to compensate us for the additional work we do to get our students' classroom and clinical ready. Without this support, we would be unable to meet the demands of our clinical partners, and this would negatively impact our nursing students. We want to keep these clinical partnerships strong so we can continue to grow and succeed. We have worked hard to maintain our excellent reputation. We also believe it is not equitable to deny faculty doctoral pay on the vacation salary schedule. We are breaking barriers and modeling the importance of education and by modeling and modeling the importance of education to our students. We need to exemplify our mission as a college. Education and doctoral pay for vocational salaries need to be supported. Please support the nursing program, doctoral pay, the nursing faculty, and the nursing students. Sincerely, the Long Beach City College Nursing Faculty. Thank you again for this exception.
I was wondering why you were all still here. Honestly, I was like, you cannot be interested in the board meeting this long. So now I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanted to say, these are your nurses. These are the ones that are up 24/7, ready to take you when you come in and process and potentially save your lives. So, and they're teaching the future. Thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna, we do not have Section 16 on the agenda, a second closed session. I am excited to report, especially because today is my husband's birthday. He's waiting patiently for me to come home with a birthday cake. Moving on to Section 17 of the agenda, this is the adjournment. And I am adjourning in honor in memory of Jana Woodward and in honor and memory of David Sumo White. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on May 24th, 2023. Closed session will be at 4:30, open session at 5:30. It is now 8:36 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.